Good evening, can you hear me? Victoria?
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
We're recording and you can go ahead and start.
Appreciate it. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Northside Board of Trustees. Before calling this meeting to order, the Board would like to take just a moment to briefly review some of the rules for conducting our meeting. Obviously, we are not meeting in person. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by the Attorney General to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or videoconferencing meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. I'll now ask Mrs. McGee to call the role of trustees.
Dr. Harrell? Present. Mr. Medina?
Present.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Mrs. Chumbly?
Present.
Mr. Blunt?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. In accordance with those suspended rules mentioned above, we certify the following. Number one, notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number two, although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by videoconference. Number three, we are meeting by use of a software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. Number four, as we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion or to address a specific agenda item will be unmuted for three minutes. Any speaker that has any written documents, please email them to the Board at info@nisd.net. I-N-F-O at N-I-S-D dot net. Number five, all other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent possible. Number six, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. The order of business for this meeting is set out in the agenda. One item that you may notice on the agenda is the consent agenda. This item includes items that are considered routine and/or are of a recurring nature. All the items listed under the consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion. The meeting will then be officially called to order. Please bow your heads as I leave the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, the Bible tells us you do your greatest works through people with grateful, trusting hearts. We are so grateful. We are especially grateful that as a team of eight, we may be divided by distance, but we are always united in doing great things for our children, their families, our staff, and our community. We are grateful that our educators and Northside staff have created so many wonderful opportunities and support where there have been extreme challenges. We are grateful to be part of a caring community of medical professionals, first responders, food suppliers, and so many more. We are extremely grateful that we are a district even more wonderful because of the focus on the health and welfare of our students along with their academics. We trust that you will continue to bless and guide us as we make decisions in service of our children. And to quote our superintendent, "Let's be the hope and the light in the lives of our students, their families, and our entire community." Okay, we will now move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Woods?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Several things to report to the Board tonight and quite a bit of thanks as well for your support as we navigate these challenges. So, I'll start by thanking the Board for the resolution that among many things allows all Northside employees to be paid during our period of closure. Someday, hopefully sooner rather than later, we will return to school and we want all of that talent to return to the benefit of our students. Also want to thank the Board and the staff for transitioning so quickly to this new format for our meetings. While all of us hope it doesn't last long, this is a way we'll be able to continue to move the district forward. While we are operating with limited priorities, we do have to plan and budget for the future and this format will allow us to do those necessary things. As the Board knows, we've tried to focus in this challenging time on three priorities. One, keeping students and staff safe. Two, continuing instruction. And third, feeding our families who need that support. To that end, we distributed over 100,000 meals last week and almost 12,000 yesterday. We've worked with the San Antonio Food Bank and I can't say enough about the work the Food Bank has done for Northside families and for families all over San Antonio and Barra County. We worked with the Food Bank late last week to make a large delivery of food at some of our feeding sites to help families get through the weekend. We plan to do that again late this week and all of these efforts around feeding our young people will continue. While the city and the county's order to stay at home does not specifically impact school operations, in the spirit of that order, the vast majority of Northside staff will no longer be working in our facilities. The exceptions include essential functions of the district to include instructing children, feeding students, policing, limited maintenance, and some business functions. We announced earlier this afternoon that we will remain in the distance learning environment involving online instruction and paper packets for some elementary students until April the 24th. It is our sincere hope that we will be able to return to school after that. Some people, school people rather, are by their very nature interested in other people and crave that interaction. This is a painful time for all school people, but we will persevere. Thanks again to the Board for all of your support of staff as we work to make the best of this situation for our students and our families. Dr. Harrell, that concludes superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Woods, at this time, are there any Board members' reports? Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. I just wanted to say that it is very definitely difficult times for all of us, but definitely for our school students and their parents. And I think that Dr. Woods deserves a huge round of applause for the way he has moved forward to address the concerns of our students and staff. So, thank you very much for being on the forefront here and leading us correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Ms. Freeman?
Do you have to go shower?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harrell. You know, Dr. Woods, I know you've been working 24/7 in meetings at the state and local level and doing our district operations to facilitate the needs of our staff. And so, I know that we all have our opportunity to say thank you, but thank you for doing that. And thanks to all our administration, teachers, drivers, food service people. So many people have just stepped up and are working very hard, apply their normal hours even for the benefit of our staff and the students. These aren't the best of times, but there's no doubt in my mind that we're doing the best that we can with the situation that we have. And I wish us all good health. Just aside, the Texas Association of School Boards is providing text message updates relating to the unique situations we're finding ourselves in. And to receive these text messages, you may text TASB alerts, that's T-A-S-B-A-L-E-R-T-S, to 313131. Also, to let you know, on the TASB website, there's a resource page for school districts with headings such as virtual board meetings, which obviously we're doing now, personnel issues, food service, related resources, elections, and all of that. So, you may find some interest in some of the links on that resource page. Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you very, very much. Mr. Medina?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Just, I want to also pay back on Ms. Reed and Ms. Freeman. What a wonderful job, Dr. Woods, leading us through these uncharted waters. Including those that are providing meals and technology and keeping open communication with our students. Importantly, parents, we wanted to thank you for your patience and also students for hitting the ground running as these assignments are being issued out to you, as well as the father of three that are, it's a daily activity in my house where all the boys are online at one time and they're doing their best with their teacher support. They're always accessible. We want to thank our teachers for being there for them. Keep up the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Ms. Chumbly?
Carol, first, I want to thank you for that invocation. That was needed and appreciated. And Brian, we always talk about Northside as a family and I think that this time has really proven that even as large as we are, that we truly are a Northside family that cares about each other. If I could get the Board to tell you to take a full 24 hours off on the weekend, though I know you would not do it, but thank you very much for all the time that you're doing. And I just wanted to do a shout out to Judy Flores and the bus drivers that have offered to help deliver food, deliver meals if we needed that and are looking for ways to be able to help our students. And those younger, yes, those younger teachers that have reached out to some more of the tenured teachers that may not be as comfortable with the technology. I've just heard really great stories about how teachers are reaching out to help each other and just our administrators, our central office staff. I think that we're just, it's unfortunate the situation this is that we are very blessed that we are in the district that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chumbly. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Yeah, Brian, I'm just gonna, you know, ditto to what everybody else has said, but just wanted to also make a, you know, a comment as well. I did have a chance to help distribute some of the nonperishables there at Zachary Middle School and Pease Middle School. And I was very impressed with the coaches and the staff there at those campuses as well as our police officers. I mean, they managed the lines and they managed expectations while they were out there. And so, it was really good to see. And I saw a lot of the kids and you could see their faces when they saw their coaches line up and giving them food. They were like, "Hi," you know, just basic, you know, excitement. And so, it was really good to see at these times. And so, I could tell that they missed being at school. But just a shout out to all the coaches and staff at all these campuses that were out there distributing food. They did a wonderful job. So, thank you to all the staff and administration for coordinating all of that. It's a lot of work and so, thank you very much for what you guys have done. Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Brian, there's just not words to thank you or to, enough words or the right words to thank you and staff and everybody who has stepped up and really considered our children's health and happiness first and put our children before our adults, so to speak. But what's been so wonderful, and what's been so wonderful on Twitter is seeing the examples of teaching and learning, but also examples of caring and loving and supportive relationships that you rarely see in the digital world. And so, I do want to echo thanks for our entire school district staff, but at the same time, praise our students and our parents and our grandparents. Some of the prayer had emotion in it because it's been a real stretch and a real struggle to be separated from your grandkids. And so, I apologize for that emotional part, but I will say that it keeps us all in touch with learning and how wonderful our teachers truly care about us. So, thanks again and thanks to our team of eight as we move forward. All right, our next report, our next agenda item is Citizens to be Heard. Citizens wishing to address the Board regarding matters not listed on the posted agenda will be held at this time. Dr. Woods?
Dr. Harrell, we do not have anybody sign up to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled or discussed?
Carol, I don't know whether I'm having a problem with you seeing my hand or what, but I pushed my button.
Okay, I see Mr. Lopez. Now I see you, Katie, but first I have Mr. Lopez. Thank you.
I was just gonna, if nobody had any other questions, I was just gonna move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Medina?
I'd second.
Okay, hang on. Ms. Freeman? Did you have any discussions?
I was gonna second or move or whatever.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Katie, did you have, Ms. Reed, did you have any discussion or anything you needed to add?
Well, I wanted to make, I wanted to make a comment for anybody who might. Can you hear me?
I can't? We can.
Okay. I wanted to make a comment just in case there are others who are listening to this Board meeting and are seeing the agenda. There's a lot of things on our consent agenda. I just wanted to make sure that they all realize that all of these items have been reviewed by a committee before they have been presented here, either a building committee or a finance committee. So, we are very knowledgeable about what is on the consent agenda and just to make sure that anybody that was listening knew that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that important reminder. Ms. Chumbly?
I just have one question, Carol, and it's to Brian. So, on the consent agenda, we have the 2020 summer program. And I'm just assuming since we're not, we don't know what's coming, but that these can be changed or modified depending upon what happens, you know, come the summer. That we may need to have some more online type of learning programs and I just wanted to check on that with you, Brian.
Yes. What we bring to you tonight is essentially the normal summer offerings, but we realize that we may need to either offer more than we have in the past or perhaps unfortunately, we won't be able to offer as much. So, those will be up for modification depending upon the status of the public health situation.
Okay, and so, we would even be, you know, up until May, we would still be able to have time to do some modifications?
Some of the programs get a little challenging to modify the later you get towards the summer, but we would certainly have the opportunity to modify, you know, see what we're doing and adjust. We've gotten kind of used to that now.
Okay, thank you. That was it, Carol.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chumbly. There's been a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. And so, all in favor will, well, not all in favor, but individuals in favor, trustees in favor will respond by saying aye. Carol Harrell, aye. Karen Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Medina, Joseph Medina?
Aye.
Gerald Lopez?
Aye.
Melissa Chumbly?
Aye.
Bobby Blunt?
Aye.
Katie, do you want to see if you're muted? There you go, you're unmuted. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. The ayes have it. We will now move to item on curriculum and instruction, adoption of state instructional materials for 2021. Dr. Jordan?
Yes, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Woods, and Board of Trustees, good evening. What we're bringing to you to... Can you hear me? Mm-hmm. Okay. What we're bringing to you tonight is the district instructional textbook committee recommendation for Proclamation 2020. These are instructional materials that will be used in next year's classrooms. So, this is for English 1 through 4, English 3 and 4 AP, Communication Applications, all three levels of debate and journalism. So, teachers have worked tirelessly, or tirelessly rather, to evaluate these options. We had a public viewing for anybody in the public who wanted to come see what was up for adoption in late January. And so, what you have before you are the unanimous votes for the adoptions of the title that we are asking for.
Can you finish that last line one more time, Dr. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am. So, we're asking for approval of the instructional materials that are included in the attachment. So, again, it's a very comprehensive process. Every teacher who teaches a course that an instructional material will be adopted for has the opportunity to vote. And so, what is brought forward to you is the committee's recommendation based on those votes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just ask, Dr. Harrell, if the agenda that's showing, the agenda item could be opened with the material on it. What we have on our screen is not that agenda item with the material. If someone could please, whoever is controlling that, if they could please open that agenda item?
It is a fairly short list that I'm happy to read if there's an interest.
Well, no, just, we just, if going forward, if we could have the agenda item open so that the material that you're presenting is available for us to be looking at.
So, if I could comment on that for the whole group, what I've done to resolve that issue is to pull up Leaderboard, which you normally use during a meeting, and just look at it while folks are talking because you've got all the attachments attached in Leaderboard as you normally would.
Brian, I've got that up, but when I go to open the attachment, it's not opening where I can see it. So, if Keith could just follow along and keep the agenda item open on the main presentation, that would be helpful. Because I did that, Brian, I set up the side and I'm just not, it's not opening where I can see it.
Yeah, I'm looking at it open, so we may have an issue on your machine. Keith doesn't have that live agenda. He's only gonna have access to the PDF and to any presentations that would be made.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Freeman? Ms. Freeman, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I had both, Dr. Harrell. So, we did discuss this in our last academics meeting back, I think it was about three weeks ago, but it seems like a gajillion. Dr. Woods, this, or Janice, this adoption in the scheme of how we do adoptions, this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a relatively large adoption, is that right?
Actually, it's the opposite. The adoption previous that was K through 8 ELAR was one of our biggest adoptions. This one is actually very small. So, it's English 1 through 4, a couple of AP classes, debate, journalism, and communication applications. So, size-wise, this is not a large annual adoption.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Harrell, I would move approval.
Okay, thank you. Katie, did you have any discussion or questions?
Makes it a lot easier. And so, I would second the motion.
Okay. Let me double check. Ms. Chumbly, was your earlier comment part of your hand waving that I see now?
I was just gonna second it.
Okay. Well, we've had a motion and a second. So, we'll do a roll call vote again. All in favor, say aye individually. Carol Harrell, aye. Karen Freeman?
Aye.
Joseph Medina?
Aye.
Gerald Lopez?
Aye.
Melissa Chumbly?
Aye.
Bobby Blunt?
Aye.
Did you not hear me?
No. Go ahead, I can hear you now, though.
Well, evidently, this doesn't work the way I thought it did. Aye.
Okay. All right, so the ayes have it. We still are in curriculum and instruction, instructional materials allotment, and TEAC certification. Dr. Jordan?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harrell. This is an annual approval that we bring to you and basically, it is required from Texas Education Code. And what it is, is we are certifying that all of our instructional materials purchases that we use the educational allotment for are only for items that are aligned to the Texas Education Skills. So, they are all aligned to the TEAC. Our request is that the Board approve this certification as written.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion?
I would move approval.
Ms. Chumbly?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor individually respond by saying aye. Carol Harrell, aye. Karen Freeman?
Aye.
Joseph Medina?
Aye.
Gerald Lopez?
Aye.
Melissa Chumbly?
Aye.
Bobby Blunt?
Aye.
Katie Reed?
Aye.
Hey, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, we will move to administration. Mr. Galindo, the purchase of buses.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Woods, trustees. Some of you may remember about a little over a year and a half ago that we brought the first installment of buses purchased with seatbelts. The reason for that is in the 85th legislative session, Senate Bill 690-
693 was approved, and what occurs now is that any bus model 2017 or newer has to have seat belts. There is flexibility in the law that if, as a board, you choose not to buy them with seat belts, that you can, um, discuss and explain that there's a financial hardship, um, hold a public hearing and, and buy them without the seat belts. Um, we, um, in May of, I believe, yeah, 2018, it was the first, uh, installment that we, uh, brought to you, and we bought them with seat belts, and since then, we've had those buses out there. We've actually, um, brought them to a policy committee, we've trained drivers, trained the students, we've had minimal issues, uh, both from elementary to high school, uh, we've had them out there. So, our request, um, tonight is for a purchase of 25 more buses, 53 passenger with the seat belts, as we did previously.
Thank you, Mr. Galindo. Are there any questions or discussions? Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Ray, Ray, real quick, what is the percentage of our buses that we have that are with seat belts and then, uh, buses that we don't have that are without seat belts? Do we have that percentage?
I don't have it, but I can tell you off the top of my head, um, Mr. Lopez, that we've only purchased that one installment of 10 buses. So, out of a fleet of 800 buses that we currently have active out there, that obviously is a very low percentage.
Sure.
And, uh, moving forward with any new purchases, however, um, we feel that that will continue to obviously increase if, as a, as a board, you choose to continue to buy them with seat belts, which is what the majority of school districts, or really all of them that I've heard, are moving forward and buying them with the seat belts.
Right. Okay, now, I was just curious, uh, thank you for the information, 'cause I would assume that, you know, probably yearly, we're gonna be invested in buying more buses, am I correct on that, to update all of that, to kinda bring us to a, a level where we have the majority of our buses, uh, with seat belts? Am I correct in figuring that?
Yes, sir, we, we do purchase buses on a cycle. Uh, you may remember, we keep them anywhere from 12 to 15 years, uh, well-maintained, but cycle them out, and so as we purchase them, we always buy new buses, and of course, now with air conditioning and, uh, cameras and so forth, so yes, sir, as we move forward, that percentage will increase as we will buy them, um, with the seat belts if, if you, as a board, approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ray, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Did anybody, has anybody seconded?
Um, I don't, so, I don't think there's been a motion yet, and I still have, uh, okay.
More questions? Okay.
But you, you can go ahead and move if you'd like.
No, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, uh, Ms. Freeman?
Yes, thank you. I, I know the last time when we talked about buses, Ray, seems to me that we were talking about the opportunity to actually have three seat belts, or that middle seat belt. I know that had been a question before, but I thought we heard that we could do that. Please clarify.
Yes, we have, and, uh, some of the, the buses that we bought actually have for the smaller children, the capability to have that, you mean the three, they have the three-point, uh, what they call the three-point, um, seat belts, but we also have, and you may be alluding to that as well, the, for the smaller children, what could be, uh, similar to a car seat that we use with some of our smallest children, the first four seats, uh, of those buses typically will have that capability.
Um, yes, actually, what I thought we had, was we had the opportunity to actually put three students in one seat without that additional type of special seating. Um, did I hear that right the last time?
Yes, and that's really for elementary children. We have been able to put three to a seat with the seat belts, um, as they were designed or are designed, uh, a little bit more difficult as you would imagine with the middle and high schoolers.
Okay, so, if with that, they would hold more than 453 then?
Yeah, now, these are, these are the smaller, these aren't the 71-passenger, um-
Okay, yeah, okay. All right. All right, is that it, Ms. Freeman?
Yes, thank you. I, I realized we were talking about the smaller buses, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Galindo. Uh, Ms. Reed?
Did not realize that my hand was up, but I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Melissa, did you have any questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, I had a problem unmuting. Um, no, I'll, I just, um, do we have a second on this, Carol?
No, not yet.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second the motion, and then before we move into the next agenda item, Carol, I just wanted to ask the board, um, what their preference was on, on something.
Okay, so, all right. On that, thank you. Oh, thank you very much. Um, so we'll go ahead and, um, take a vote on that. Now I'm trying to find my name, but I'll go by memory. Um, Carol Harrell, aye. Karen Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumbly?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Um, the next item, superintendent, I was gonna ask the board for just, um, a few minutes of consideration on this next agenda item, um, and a possible, uh, delay or a possible revisiting this at another time, uh, kinda ba-, um, basically based on what's going on with priorities for our children and staff health and welfare plus instruction. So, I'm gonna ask, um, Dr. Woods if he'll tell us a little bit about, um, a timeline in the naming, just so it can provide, uh, provide context for, um, what we wanna consider as a board on item number 16. Uh, Mr. Woods, Dr. Woods?
Uh, Dr. Harrell, the, the elementary and the middle school, uh, that we contemplate naming are slated to open in August of 2021. Uh, if the board were to choose to delay that, we do have plenty of time built in our schedule, uh, that would accommodate that. The high school, uh, obviously doesn't open until fall of '22, and so again, uh, a fair amount of time available to the board for that purpose.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any comments? Ms. Ch- uh, Chumbly?
Carol, thank you for bringing that up. I was gonna say, with everything that we, we have going on right now, if, um, and Brian, thank you for verifying that for us, I would move that we table this agenda item, um, until the next meeting where it is appropriate.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chumbly. Um, there's been a motion and a second, I think the second came from Mr. Lopez, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there any discussion? Um, I'm looking, Katie, Ms. Reed?
Is there a possibility that we could do these, not all, on one night, take them separately and do one each night? I think it would be easier for us to keep that on an agenda that way. Uh, Dr. Woods, is that an option?
That is completely up to the discretion of the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
How the rest of the board feels, but I would prefer to do, rather than trying to do three of them in one night, split them up and have one at each different meeting.
I, I think that's a great idea. I like that idea.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blunt?
No, I'm glad, I definitely agree with, uh, Miss said that we're, I'm glad we're gonna table this item. I think the motion is appropriate. I think the motion also, as stated, uh, will allow us to make that decision at the appropriate time, but there's no way we can identify a schedule of when to do this right now, but the motion covers that, so definitely in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Freeman?
Yes, thank you. Um, regarding the first opportunity, or whenever that might be, to, um, to put these on the agenda, the, these are, this is going to take some discussion, and this type of format for discussion, um, it's the best that we have right now, but it's not the best for discussing, um, school board nominations, so I'd like to put this off, not, we need to be cognizant that it might take us two meetings to get to a, to get to a namesake, but my thought would be to push it as far out as, as we possibly can, and, you know, maybe with some, um, good fortune, we'll be able to, um, meet in the boardroom, uh, and have that discussion.
Okay, I'm looking, and I'm not seeing any other hands waving, so the original motion was, um, to delay the naming, and there's been several suggestions, um, that I think we can consider as we form the agenda based on the ever-changing, um, scenario of what's going on. So, if it's okay with the board right now, we'll just, um, stay with the original motion of delaying the naming, and then we can work, um, on the agenda for, do we do elementary first, and if it's elementary first, uh, two, two different meeting dates. Um, is there, are there any thoughts on that? Ms. Chumbly?
Yes, Carol, I just wanted to, to make sure, um, that we state the motion that, um, I'm moving that we table items A, B, and C until appropriate, and that gives us that, but I wanted to make sure that the minutes reflect that it, you know, all three of them, the elementary, the middle, and the high school.
Okay, can you say that one more time, so, Ms., we all, we get that?
I'm, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that the recording and the minutes reflected that I'm moving that we table items A, B, and C, which would be the elementary, the middle, and the high school, um, until appropriate. It just fits it, but I just wanted it to be clear for the minute.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Mr. Lopez was the second. Um, so we'll do roll call, um, approval individually. Carol Har- Harrell, aye. I can't even say my name. Carol Harrell, aye. Karen Freeman?
Aye.
Joseph Medina?
Aye.
Gerald Lopez?
Aye.
Melissa Chumbly?
Aye.
Bobby Blunt?
Aye.
Katie Reed?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Um, the, uh, item number 16, A, B, and C, has been, uh, tabled, and we will move to future agenda items with Dr. Woods.
Uh, Dr. Harrell, members, you do have a copy of future agenda attached, uh, in leaderboard. We are tracking a, uh, April called meeting that would normally be a presentation of, uh, the first blush of compensation and growth and improvement. Uh, I cannot say at this point if we will be ready to commit to those topics at that time. Uh, we will work on that with the business and finance staff and, uh, get back with you as we get closer to that date about, uh, that meeting.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any comments from the board, or any questions from the board? All right, um, we're 25, okay, um, all right, and we are now, there's no executive session, uh, we are moving to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Can we do it that way?
Aye.
Dr. Harrell, if I could just make a comment before we wrap up, and just again, thank the board for your flexibility, uh, and your trust in the staff as we go forward. Uh, several of you made comments around the massive effort, uh, online learning and feeding our students is taking, and, and that could not happen without incredible, uh, staff in, in our school district, and I'd, I'd love to just close our meeting by thanking our staff for what they have done and what they will continue to do in this very unusual situation. Uh, again, thanks to you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and God bless us everyone. The meeting is adjourned at 7:44.
Y'all be safe.
Thank you, thanks for all your input, too, appreciate it, everybody. Thank you, thank you.